Item number thirteen.
Thank you.
Hi.
I did, or no, sorry, councillor Ross was the quickest. Um, right, so over to you, Clark, you have a paper. Ladies and gentlemen, it is item thirteen.
Yep, this is just the simple, as you know, sort of kid from RCC does this on a regular basis. And we need to, especially this year, in my opinion, revisit, and I've already talked to him, and he will be doing it in October if you approve this. Because obviously the trees, especially this year, as anybody who's into this kind of thing will tell you, have suffered greatly this year because of the summer, where it's been incredibly dry. And many of the trees we can already see cut close in other places are suffering. So it's important from the health and safety point of view, we get an update on where we are with the trees, because I know that someone are causing me concern. In fact, as the chair knows, we had one in, um, cut close, we had to cut down very quickly because it was rotten before, if we hadn't cut it down, and it was leaving it about seventy trees, or thereabouts, from where it should have been, and it was causing me great concern. So the idea is we get the report, hopefully, because we can initiate it now, we should have the report for the November meeting. Because obviously also, we need to get the contractors in as soon as possible while the trees are cutable, I nearly said, or prunable, and that obviously is up till March, so we need to try and get this extra doctors as soon as possible.
And to then confirm the proposal is that a ground-based visual assessment for the above-mentioned areas will be one thousand four hundred and eighteen seventy-nine ex bat, uh, which is within this year's budget set for planting tree surgery, which was nine thousand.
I'm happy to produce that.
Marvelous, well.
Also, it would be wrong for me not to mention what an appalling mistake our trees have got into, and I just think that we've been so lucky, that particularly in the recent storm, that we didn't have more fall down.
Well, we're taking a firm action to sort the, uh, sort that problem, and thank you for supporting that, councillor Ross, because we had a second.
The tree that was chopped down was actually in the churchyard, not cut close.
Seconded by councillor, oh, sorry, was that a question?
No, that was me seconding and listening to Martin at the same time.
I'm afraid councillor.
But I see you go, I thought I come back to the anger.
Uh, all in favour?
Can I ask a little bit of information, please? Councillor Ainsley will remember, if you can get a planning list come through, it is absolutely full of references to trees, I've never seen so many, dozens, all over the county, having to have work done, it's very, very sad, it really is.
Yep, well, at least if it's kept on top of, it shouldn't, uh, be here after quite a long time. Lovely, so that was the moment.
Yeah.
Item number fourteen, this one might be a touch more contentious. Uh, external audit to review. The external audit report on twenty-four and twenty-five. Twenty-five. Um, I think this paper is yours again, uh, Clark, isn't it?
It is, thank you very much.
I don't care to be honest.
Okay, obviously, as has already been pointed out by some councillors, I'm not, and no town clerk is ever happy with that audit, and I'm not happy with this one, but obviously, without going into details, there have been external circumstances which have meant, unfortunately, I was away for two months when the audit was being carried out, um, and made very difficult for the office not only to partake in the internal audit, but to get the external audit replies in, in time for the demands of the system, which are quite rigorous, from about April to August, that you have a limited time once you get the internal audit to get the external audit through. So, it's not great, but I would say most of it is administrative mistakes rather than anything serious, and in fact, this is proven by the report certificate we've been approved. Uh, so obviously it's completed reviews of section one and two, and this does your responsibilities, that's for more. If I could take you to fourteen-three, I have to explain something to you. So the description of services, you will see effectively that our budget usually is of the order of one thousand five hundred, or thereabouts. This year, there is a doubling of that fee because on line two, you can see an additional charge consideration of points raised to the external auditor. So obviously, I was aware of this and talked to the auditor, and they made it very clear that this because they had questions from a member of the public regards our audit. Um, obviously, I then had to delve into, as much as I could do with more, what this about, and they said, well, and the regulations are quite clear, this is how it goes, and I think this legislation is unbelievable. Uh, the first thing is that the person who gives this question has to be a member of the public who's on the electoral roll, you'd understand that in Oakham Town Council, which is understandable. The second is, they must give us a copy of their questions, uh, otherwise more external auditor was not accepted. We only have on record one, um, three questions from one member of public, and that member of public is a councillor. And therefore, I have no doubt in saying that this expense has arisen from the questions of an Oakham Town councillor. The three questions have been put to this town council already, and have been answered by this council. So, and I'll read you a fact sheet from this. If a councillor uses his official town council email, they are implicitly representing the council regardless of any disclaimer about acting as a concerned citizen. In that case, they should seek permission for full council before contacting the external auditors, especially if the query includes costs or triggers information. Would you believe the regulations in this country are that we have to pay the cost of any public questions to our external auditor? So you could argue that we could have ten, twenty, thirty questions, and we will get a bill, which we can't question from the external auditor. Yeah, and the county councillor never says that. And obviously, you could argue this is really a system which is difficult to understand. And it makes it very clear that if a councillor genuinely wished to react to the concerned citizen, they should use personal contact details and a vote referring to council matters unless they are clearly within the public domain. And they should seek full council approval before initiating contact, especially if using council resources. So we have a situation which I've indicated, and I'm your town clerk, so I have to say well, I'm not happy, because I don't think this is the way the council, our council should work. I'm not happy also there with the external audit, I can tell you, but considering the resources the council had in office staff during that period, I'm amazed we got through it, to be honest. Um, I came back in the nick of time, I would say almost, because we didn't, we only had one part-time staff at one stage, having to try and not only look after the internal auditor, but also to try and get the external auditor to a place where they've never done it before. So, to be honest, I would say, and this is the last of my speech, I'm proud of the way this office have got through this very difficult time. I'm not proud of the fact that it's because we, I wasn't here, but we are now back where we should be, and I am determined that we continue from here on. But this in particular, this for me, as your town clerk, is very, very annoying.
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, worth, um, worth noting that it was, we as a council, if you cast your minds back, those of you, uh, that were here, we acknowledged that this was likely to be the outcome of this external audit, and I believe, if memory serves, we've already resolved to have a bit of a half-time health check. Uh, Hindley?
Yes.
Yes, we have. Yes, we have. It hasn't been brought to council, it was supposed to be.
Financially, yeah.
It has been raised because we anticipated that this would be the, uh, the outcome of the audit, so that we can go forward, uh, in a much more positive manner and get a good one for this next period.
The other thing I should have said, that obviously it's outside the external audit, is I've already contacted another auditor, who will in the next month or two do another audit.
But we haven't agreed at cost.
I'm finding costs, who will come to the November meeting?
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Brooks?
Yeah, um, I, I also read this and was quite disappointed, because I think it's actually the worst out of the last five years. I'm not, I know this is off, I find it, I, I don't mind saying publicly, it was myself who raised the questions, and I followed procedure and didn't actually find anything that said that I couldn't do it as a councillor. But when I wrote to Moore, I oped first to the council, you were absent, I received no replies, you telling me that they did, but I couldn't.
Not from the coun, oh, well.
Yeah, not from the council. Um, when I was asked for evidence from Moore's for my questions, so they could investigate, I couldn't get anything out of the office. So I wrote to Moore's and said, I retract my questions, and this is before the audit started, so they shouldn't be billing us, because they wrote back to me, and they said to me, yes, we accept your retraction, but we will pass on the questions for reference. That's a big difference, because they never investigated it. So that's why I said to Mr. Ondley when he.
The rules are quite clear, councillor Brooks, that they, if they, if they accept it, they have to pass it on.
But they didn't accept it, they wrote to me, I will show you the email, they, they wrote to me and said they accept my retraction, and they, and, and, and I made it very clear to them that I was writing as a resident, which is my right, and I explained I was not getting the responses from the office, and said that it would be a waste of tax credit payers money to investigate it on that basis, and they said, yes, okay. And I didn't hear a single thing back, because if they've dealt with these questions, they should write to you, and the council, and me, to give the answers to those questions, and they haven't. So I think there's a, there's a good reason to go back to them and say, oh, this is not on, the resident, and the resident has rights, yes, I know you're saying that I use my council email address, but actually, I'm sitting here holding my hands up, but actually, a resident has a right, which I am as well, to not be identified, which you care to know did.
That's not law.
But anyway, we might go down there, but I, I think we need to look into this, and I have.
Um, yes, I, I think that merits given, given that information, I think it merits exploration to ask Moore's, without them charging for the privilege of doing so, uh, why we have been billed if you were acknowledged as having a retraction.
And this was before they started people.
So if you would, if you would kindly do so, councillor Brooks, if you wouldn't mind, sending through, of course, the designated channel, um, your email to the office.
Yeah, I will forward it, because it's easy to find search Moore's on the email.
Thank you. Councillor Ondley, you have a comment?
Yes, please, yeah, I'd like to make two comments. One is that, um, using your, using the council email address, um, just saying I am a local, I'm a concerned resident doesn't negate the fact that that's your Kipman Town Council, and actually it holds weight in law that you use the Oakham Town Council address. That's the first, please let me finish, please let me finish, please let me finish. That, 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 that is factual content I'm just trying to deliver to. And the second thing is that I think we're missing the bigger question. I think those, we all knew that the, there would be procedural errors within the actual submission for the, uh, both the internal and for the external auditors, and that has proven to be the case. But I'd really like to raise the question, is why we suddenly found ourselves in the position of having no office staff at a time of high demand with budget questions to be addressed? Uh, well, how do we manage to find ourselves in that position? So that's really what I think should be the subject of an investigation, because it comes as no surprise to me. In fact, I, I agree with what the clerk, the town clerk was saying, that actually, it's a surprise that we got, that it came back as it did, because we had, we had no office staff or a part-time clerk after a period of time to actually address the issues of, the major issues of budget at that time of year. We did try to engage some help from outside the organisation, but this was, in my opinion, challenged wrongly, uh, saying that section one-one-six of the, uh, the Gov Act in nineteen-seventy-two prohibit us from actually using a councillor. It is a fact, and something I'd look forward to discussing, that as long as there's no payment changes hands, then advice can be given. The person in question was the ideal person to address or to assist us at our hour of need. So I think there's bigger questions to be answered.
And a special commendation again, and particularly fraught time to councillor Douthwaite, who's not here tonight.
Precisely.
Having been dropped very much in the thick of it with no, uh, no tangible, uh, and standard of office support, did an incredibly good job in a very speedy time.
Do you still feel guilty for it?
Ah, it's.
Look, that's not good.
Could I just make one more point? Could I just make one more comment?
Obviously, because of the rules, Moore's, you had to give us your questions, there is a serious error in your statements, uh, which I have to highlight and say disappoint me greatly. You implied that the contractor who did the toilet renovation for us came in for the church wall contract at a ridiculously high price compared to the other contractors. That is a falsehood, a big falsehood.
Councillor Brooks, you've got a right, I'll give you the right to reply, but.
Metcalf, who did our toilets, came in and did the price, they quoted in Sally Ann Woodworth's notice, because she proposed we can hand them thirteen thousand for the church wall, which was the cheapest toilet for the church wall. In fact, the sixty thousand came from another contractor, and Sally Ann Woodworth, quote rightly within a rights at the meeting, said, I would prefer a local contractor, which was R and C, which were, I think about, and Sally Ann Woodworth's might very disagree, about a thousand pounds more expensive than Metcalf's. So what you put into the external auditor was, I can only stand untruth.
It was a mistake, because the bill was wrong.
You can't do that.
No, but it wasn't deliberate, if that's what.
Metcalf may say otherwise.
But then the questions were retracted.
Um. They're still on record.
Yeah. And I've been thrown what I was going to say, but the, 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 this thing about the staff not being here, that came around because I made a complaint, which is still being investigated, I've used the word investigated, and then those staff went home sick because someone leaked on this house, or leaked my email to every single member of that staff.
Okay, we're going into.
We're going into.
No, 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 you want to help.
No, it should be investigated, not investigated.
It should be, it's appropriate, but, but there was one other point. We've, we've had a debate, I mean, about my costs. There was a lot of things in this report that we didn't do, like we didn't put the correct timings, didn't put it on the website, and also, yes, the penalty that the council incurred has not been mentioned.
Two seventy quid.
Sorry?
Two seventy?
Yeah, so it's money. So we've both made mistakes. That's what I'm saying, is we've both made mistakes over it, and I tried to retract my questions, which they don't seem to, even though they acknowledged it, but you're not acknowledging that there is huge amount of mistakes in there. We keep saying, oh, we've done well, Anna's done well, to me, that's unacceptable. We, we don't, they tell me off for going on about history, we had five years of the most appalling audit reports. We had a bad internal audit report where we had to sit and listen from the person responsible for getting that, saying it was a good report, when the first words in it, and I'm going to shut up after this, say, it was poor. You know, so I, I, and I appreciate since the clerk has come back, there's been some huge changes. We're not there yet, but let's try and move forward and stop this.
Well, that, that, that does require all stakeholders.
And if I got my answers correctly from the office at the time, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about this now. So there was an issue with not getting questions answered by the office, which this month, every single question I put to the office, which has not been any, am I correct, Chris? They've been answered. But I, I will shut up now, but I would, I don't want to be bashed for this, when it was part of the time of the council being in a pretty poor position, and, and it does highlight that the council broke laws, that, you know, that govern our governance, it mentions that, it's poor governance and things. So it's not me, we're all responsible for poor governance as a corporate body, and we need to sort that and move on.
We do, and I don't, I, as I've said before, I don't pretend that the internal or external reports have been good, they objectively aren't. However, I think that given the circumstances, we did incredibly well even to get what we did. So that's my hot take on the matter. Um, however, we can, um, I think, oh, we can move on.
Can I just make one observation? All of the little charges that openly were employed.
Julie, no, she's, thank you. Uh, so, uh, yeah, it's just a proposal that we, uh, we accept findings, I mean, that we know the report, uh, have a fine working group in support of the office staff, address the issues in the reports, and bring back recommendations to full council, I think that's fairly.
I'll second it.
Oh, yeah, I'll oppose it, Sian's seconded it, all in favour? Against?
And I would fall, excepted what's being said. I'm just pouring a drink out of my.
Lillian McKeon?
She'll be there. In France, yeah.
Yes, um, we, we had a policy change, and, and we forgot to put the, I'm just simplifying it, we forgot to put the Rutland flag in for Rutland Day, so I'm asking that there are possibly two years left of Rutland, but we put it in, because I think it's important that, um, that we do fly it, it was noted that we weren't flying it on Rutland Day.
Councillor.
All this is over?
Good, just before you go, we're too late.
Too late.
It's just that we haven't got a Rutland flag that is worthy to fly, so there could be an expense to buy a Rutland flag, sorry councillor.
Yeah, we're just.
You can get one of those for about ten pounds.
I would still have to say yes.
Also, Rutland, just so you know, you won't disappear anywhere.
We don't know yet.
We hope not.
So we were in the throes of accepting that. Um, shall we have a show of hands again, all accepting that proposal, that's unanimous, fairly uncontested as well then. Item number sixteen, uh, electricity supply in the marketplace, take it away, Clark.
Here we go, right, obviously, as has been pointed out by councillor Martin Brooks, we had a situation which I agree was semi-unacceptable, which is that we had within the marketplace traders using electric plugs that we grew up, um, all mainly for the Christmas lights, but for other ventures too, it goes far too far back for me to mention them, but they're unmeted, and obviously they are being used by the traders on Wednesdays and Saturdays, and their walls are, so they're getting a bit dated. So obviously, we considered metering them and reading them, which is a good idea, obviously we don't want to be going up the ladder every day, because the meters up are poor, and we have talked with Nigel, who's the head trader at the market, at the market stalls, who looks after all the leases, and he's agreed with our electricians that five pounds a day, attendance or not, so whether a trader's there or not on a Wednesday and Sunday, if they hire it, he will gather from the usual mechanism, and he will via back transfer at the end of a period, month, two months, send it to Oakham Town Council. We will then, obviously, pass that on to our unmeted supplier, which is SSE, which is what unfortunately has gone to have the county councillor keeps charging us for all the streetlights, but also obviously at Christmas, what we have to do as a council is, it's a strange thing really, we put all the Christmas lights up, which are on unmeted suppliers, we then have to file the contract to get an estimate of how much ampedage voltage we've used, which is then passed on to SSE and give us a bill. So that can be part of that mechanism for passing on and being making it so that we know, and every now and again, I propose that obviously our handyman will go up the ladder and just check the meterage and see, making sure that we are within the law. So, and also the other thing that part of this being done before Christmas is that Christmas lights will switch on and off with a proper meter, with a proper time switch, and also the traders will have enough sockets to not do what they do at the moment, which is embarrassing, which is daisy chain, and yes, we won't go any further than that.
And it's my understanding that you, if you care to go into great detail or not, and you've actually gone out to more than one service provider, but the others have come back and said that they are.
If we wish to have this done before Christmas, we only had one supplier, uh, one electrician who was willing to do it in the timeframe before Christmas, and to be honest, it is a health and safety, as councillor Brooks has pointed out, there is a health and safety system behind this, because anybody who goes down to the market on Wednesday or Saturday can see it doesn't really do as much favour when there's a spaghetti junction in the air. So this is to make it safe.
Councillor Clark?
You might want to put his surname in the paper as well. Who's surname?
Nigel.
Oh, yes, I tried, I didn't know if I had. Is, yeah, I could do, but I thought, sometimes they don't put their names, everybody knows him as Nigel.
I didn't put his surname because of all this DTR.
I know, so, is that such a sensible way?
Well, I'll try, I'll try. I think we need additional proposals, I think we accept the tax quota's fine, but I think we need to, to actually start a list, so I, I think we need to document in a proposal number two, a, oh, can you read?
Can we just say no?
Yes, the charge of five pounds that would be levied against stallholders, and the levy paid directly to OGC, paid, five pounds per day to stallholders. And the third one is that periodic checks with, uh, of the meter supply will be made, and adjustments to the levy made is appropriate. I think that's important, that we actually record the fact that there will be a five pound levy initially, and that we will be per day, and then that, that will be paid to us.
That could be, we reduce it.
Well, exactly, yeah, exactly, but I think periodic checks of the meter supply will be made, and adjustments of the levy made is appropriate.
Uh, and presumably, we will need some sort of lease contract to manage that.
Well, I think that's, my personal belief is that that's going to be managed by the ever-popular Nigel.
Which is fine, that we should probably enshrine that in writing.
Yes, the, the, the levy to be managed by Nigel, whatever his proper name is.
So we can, okay, so we're amending that to include councillor Ainsley's proposal, that we crystallise the five pounds and the periodic checking, you have got that minute down.
And that we authorize Nigel to collect the levy.
That we authorize Nigel to collect the levy, and, um, that we enshrine that in writing to communicate that.
Yep. These proposals, yeah.
I mean, you might have to include the fish man, who I don't know his name after all these years, because they're both leaseholders, so they would probably both have to agree with this. They're both, well, they both signed up with Andrea's space.
Nigel tells me he is.
Good lad.
Uh, largely, if I might, that would, I think, be largely irrelevant, because it, the electricity supply is several from that contract, so that, that bears no standing on what we choose to do with our electrical supply otherwise, so.
Nigel told me he's the lead contractor.
I would not necessarily have yet.
He's the one who collects everything.
So what we choose to do with our electrical points to whomsoever is occupying any space nearby is our own. Lovely, uh, so that was proposed by councillor Ainsley, second, councillor Clark, oh, sorry.
Getting your name on the table.
I've seconded councillor Harris, I think it was. All in favour? Unanimous, marvelous. On to, we're battling through now. Good meeting today.
Twenty-six.
Let's, yes, let's have, uh, item number. Let's have, uh, item number seventeen, the Christmas lights switch on. Uh, if.
Andy.
If you, if, is this something you're, um, intrigued? Oh, I can see your.
My name's all over it.
Are you happy to tears off this, Sally Anne?
Yeah.
Marvelous.
Right. We decided on the date of the Christmas switch on is the twenty third of November. Um, we've had a meeting, myself and the staff, um, regarding what we want to have done on that day. Um, basically, we've gone out and investigated, um, looking at having some Christmas snow globe hire, Christmas hooker duck store, rather than what we normally do is have Ted and sometimes he doesn't turn up because of issues with the weather. Um, whereas I'm hoping this is going to go ahead. Um, so yeah, basically what we want to do is to spend some money. Obviously this goes over our budget. Um, but what I have suggested is because we were going to use the UK.
Nice to be here.
I can never get those letters out. We were going to use it for the Rutland Day event that never happened. I believe we can use it for the Christmas event, which we've done before. And that would pay for the Christmas globe, the hooker duck, the anything else that we want to throw in there. Um, firewalker, Filbert the Frog, Fox, Filbert the Fox, I keep calling him a frog.
He's free.
Is now coming along as well. So we've got him doing a bit and we've got the lions doing the Santa. So we've got quite a few nice things coming along that aren't, aren't the same as what Carol Lacan would do with her food fairs, her Christmas food fairs. This is more of a family orientated event, basically. So what we're asking is that council approve the entertainment package that's been listed above, um, at a cost of two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six pound, including VAT, with the extra money coming from UKSP.
Could I just add, obviously you're not, but you're aware that seventeen point one also, that this is from a separate budget to a certain extent.
Oh, there, yes.
Mill Street Lights.
That.
Philip Angel did last year. It's all lights, would you believe, that he's willing to do, hold the same price for last year. And obviously if we don't have Mill Street.
Yes, trouble.
We'll have more.
Thank you. So I'd like, if you could add that to the recommendation, Council, so.
Okay, so that's, um, yeah. To approve the entertainment package for two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six, including VAT, plus two thousand pounds for the lights on Mill Street.
And presumably.
I do apologize, and the of it.
Oh, there's another bit.
There's another bit, yeah.
Over there.
Oh, that's on the post-it note, sorry. Plus, there'll also be a charge for the traffic management of one thousand six hundred and thirty pounds. Um, and we've also been told, which we haven't done previously, but we're now being told that we must have, a first aid and lost child at these events as well, which is also going to cost us another four hundred and eighty pounds.
Sounds sensible.
They didn't add all that up, did they?
Did we have a? We've got a mathematician. Our own Calw Alderman, what do you make of it?
Uh, is that maybe, that'll all funny as birds we can get. Five thousand eight hundred and seventy.
Three thousand six hundred and seventy.
So that's sixteen thirty for the TM, whatever that was.
Traffic management.
Traffic management. Two seven six six, copied my own writing for the entertainment package.
Yeah.
Two thousand pounds for Mill Street.
Yeah.
And four eighty for whatever that was for, I can't remember.
If you're going.
That's for the first aiders.
First aid. I'm sorry to be a pedant.
That's okay.
If I'm going to split hairs, this Philip Angel quote is two grand.
Plus VAT.
Next back. This is, this is including that. So I just want to make sure that we account either way for either gross or net.
So that on that is four hundred. So that's an additional four hundred. So that's six thousand two hundred and seventy. So if we call it six five, we'd be well with it.
Including that.
Yeah, including that.
Marvelous. Council Brooks, you're on, is going to get tired.
And just one thing I want to point out, very quickly, I'm so sorry, Council Brooks.
What's that to you, Chad?
Oh, go on, Paul.
It's just that the UK SPF, I have, I have only confidence that it will be approved. But at the moment, we don't have control of the UK SPF and therefore have to go to ALE to actually say, yes, that's fine. And I'm sure it will be. But I should say at this point, once again, sorry, Chad, we've already signed a contract with UK SPF. So the fund should be with us very shortly. But we still need to make sure that's within the rules.
Yes, that it complies with the.
But I'm sure it will be.
While we're considering this tonight, when I went to the meeting with Sally Anne and Melanie and the park, we were shown some very nice pictures. So these things are not, um, of the usual standard. First of all, remember the Grotty Ice Rink. They're actually very professional organisation. The globe thing is the type of thing you might see at Westfield Shopping Centre, for instance. So it's not some little, well, I'm hoping it's not misleading pictures, but it, it all looks very professional. Um, so you have to trust me that we did that. Um, I, I, I don't know why we've included the Mill Street lights. It always annoys me that for some reason Mill Street has never been included. I think we end up paying more money every year for this because it is a separate thing. It should be in the contract for all the lights.
The thing is, sorry.
Why's it come back?
We were told to cut back on Christmas decorations. And one of the places that we decided to cut back on was Mill Street. In the meantime, we had this UK SPF money come forward and we've been using that to put the lights down Mill Street to make Mill Street look a lot brighter. But once that money runs out, then they will, we'll have to go back to the contract and decide whether we're going to put Mill Street back onto the budget.
Shall I, you know this already, I think, because I talked to you, uh, and I think I talked to you, Council Brooks. We went to obviously our contractor who do, does the rest, and they were four time providers of the Philip Angel or Mill Street. So we've done competitive tender.
But I think if we come, I don't know when this contract's up for Christmas lights.
It'll go another year.
So I think it should be bunged in and I'm sure that it wouldn't be seen as an expensive addition.
Yeah.
Every year we can review.
We, we welcome the, uh, the ability to renew our contracts for a more competitive rate where possible.
Do we, do we need a proposal for this now?
Yes, please. Well, I proposed it, I mean.
You need to change the money.
Right. So we're proposing what we're actually.
Six five hundred.
So the full council approves the entertainment package, including still walk of fire performance, et cetera, et cetera, including first aid and the road closures, which is all part of Martin's Law.
And the VAT for.
Yeah, it comes to six thousand five hundred.
Yep.
You got it?
Yep.
That's my proposal.
I will second that.
Oh, thank you.
Quick off the mark, all those in favour? May I ask a question? What is a fire performer?
It's somebody who's got a.
It's one that comes out of the mouth, isn't it?
No, they don't stick it down their mouth.
Well, they might do.
Well.
Go, thanks.
Anyway, yes, all in favour.
Yes, all in favour.
Unanimous, thank you.
So that's still in our seventeen point as well.
I think we were trying to go back to the good old days of the late night shopping, where there was entertainment and things.
Lovely. Uh, on to item number eighteen, which is.
Oh, God. Yep. This is simply, I know that some people have been talking about administration on the site. This is simply Rutland, or just spell that, sorry, web designer Andrew Post of discoveropen.uk, has been basically maintaining the site and making sure that it's live and.
This is, this is just.
Just hosting it. That's it. So you can see over the page on the eighteen point one, the cost, which I think is very reasonable, is two hundred and seventy-five pounds effectively a year inclusive of VAT.
Why does it say monthly hosting on the quote?
Because it's, the rate is nineteen pounds per month and if you look, it says costly.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Come on.
Lovely. I personally don't think there's any more of a contention about that. Um.
I, I have, I have an issue with it because we, this was never looked forward at the beginning. I have big issues with this.
With what specifically, Council?
With the costs. The ongoing costs. The council never agreed to cover the ongoing costs for this. And we have nothing, I guess it's a small amount of money again, but we have no budget for it. Um, and we had meetings with the traders where names were put forward, who said they would do take responsibility for the website, but nobody has.
But this is just for the hosting, physical hosting.
Physical hosting.
There's no management.
No administration. But administration, we can talk about later.
We've simply keeping and everybody. Some money to set this up and we were told that was the amount. It's nearly six thousand pounds. We've already paid them for setting up the website. And that money came up of UKPS or whatever. But, but, but also we, 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 we sort of, if we're hosting that website, which in my view benefits, which, well, no, we're paying to host it. In my view, comes very thin line of what the precept is allowed to be spent on because we're not allowed to spend the precept for the benefit of businesses. And that's where we were allowed to pay for the website because it didn't come from precept money. And this is what I wanted the town partnership to take it over so that we didn't get this issue down the line. Because what else is going to be sprung on us as the time goes on? You know, that's what concerns me. And it is basically, it's, it, it is a directory more so for businesses.
Well, I think that's up for debate, but Council Ainsley had a point, I think.
Yeah, the point I'd like to make is this is actually for the benefit of Oton Town. And what we've actually got is an events calendar with, and it is still actually still being populated. I do not think that this is going against the spirit of actually supporting Oton Town. The, the, the traders are part of Oton Town. We are not supporting businesses. We are actually looking to actually make this a better place to live, working there. That's my view. And I think nineteen pounds to host it is something that we should be absorbing.
I, would you be happy therefore to propose the, that you accept that quotation?
Uh, yes, I thought, yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Do we have a second one? Council Harris, thanks very much. All those in favour of supporting that quotation? Against? Council Brooks?
Do you want that recording, Council?
I'll have to, right.
Lovely, that has carried. Uh, right. Item number nineteen, some teary field picnic benches. Uh. So this is a follow-up from the paper that was originally brought from myself, Council Waterworth, about the excellent idea of bringing picnic benches into the teary field. Not I think was supported by any, by women in public as well, obviously.
So obviously the easiest thing is, because this was Sally Anne's from the start, is it, she wishes to, Council, Sally Anne, sorry, Council, if she wishes to address it, I think that's best because she's chosen to bring this forward.
Okay.
If you like.
I have a question before I say anything. The quote that we've got here for this job reference, just one bench. Right. Can I split this then?
Does look like it, doesn't it?
Um, we've been out, we've got close to how much the benches would cost. And the costing for the benches is three thousand two hundred and fifty-four pounds. Um, and one of them is a disabled access bench so that if anybody from the care home on site or you, um, I want to call it a long-staffed house, but I know it's not a long-staffed house, what's it called? You know what I mean by that. They want to come across. It makes it easier for them to be able to slip underneath the, uh, the table. Um, my concern is, and that's why I was just bullying over it, is the installation of them. I think that's an awful lot of money for one bench. We're talking two thousand pound to just put one bench in.
I do.
And if we're looking, yeah, this two thousand four, on the quote underneath.
From two day building, wasn't it?
Could I? There's no way I could make a comment, is there?
Yes, please.
Um, I didn't, I didn't know about, because unfortunately I've not been able to attend uh, very often. I didn't know there was actually a proposal for the picnic benches until, I'm just up to notice in the, uh, in the agenda. Um, I sent a, 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 a note in, uh, about the, the residents' users' request for more seating and for more litterings, uh, just as, to add on some points I'd sent, uh, had sent in recently. Um, there, there are questions about the linking of picnic benches with litter directly. So you couldn't, you couldn't at the moment, I don't think, envisage putting a picnic bench in there without making sure it's got provision for litter, because there are ongoing issues with litter, which I'm actually involved in to some extent with talking to the school. Um, and there are only three litter bins within the field. So there is the issue about seating and litter bins. The picnic bench, um, and the disabled people, disabled people don't actually tend to go into, into the field in the main. They tend to go to the end of the runway, which was put in the pathway. Those that can walk around may do, but from what I tend to see, it's, it's not a very good surface for them to walk on in the main. So where you located the picnic bench would require a lot of thought, uh, a lot of consideration. So whilst it's a great idea, and in fact the school, as you know, use that field extensively, particularly Harrington School at lunchtimes, seventy-five to a hundred people in there eating food and they, and they enjoy it. Um, it is not, it, it's a great idea for seating. It's probably a great idea for picnic benches. But if it's just one and the cost is affected by catering for the disabled, which is a great thing, it does require some thought, I think, because it's a tremendous amount of money. And if I was guessing, you needed at least two picnic benches and you need probably at least two new seating areas, which, you know, maybe integrate with those. Because at the moment, the field is, is like the nose facilities.
And that's, I don't want to, I don't want to actually drag on. I do need to dive, dive in here. Um, I need to propose that we extend this, uh, meeting by.
Thirty minutes.
Eight minutes, yes, why not? Um, all those, second, uh, Council Clark, all those in favour? Unanimous, lovely.
Okay, so the cost of, the cost for the three benches, which is two normal ones and one disabled one, comes to three thousand two hundred and fifty-four pounds.
Right.
Which I don't see as a major problem. My, the only issue that I have with it is it costing two thousand pound per bench to have them put in.
For the, for the base work here.
And that's no litter bin.
And yes, the litter bins, I've been assured that the litter bins are being looked into, but they're looking at replacing all the bins in the centenary into better areas.
You push there?
The office.
We are, we are.
Okay.
We're, I mean, I will say, you might have noticed, if you've been looking, we've, there are three bins. As an immediate action because of the litter problem on the in-between, I'll just put this carefully, between Little and the school, there's a, I nearly said a rat run, I'm not going to use the word rat run. There is a continual rat between the two. And the bin that is between the two is getting, we had, there was a concrete pad already near the present one, or hand manager knew the bin was never used, which was right on the far side near the railway line, to be close to the other one, to at this experiment with getting another bin there. And hopefully the participants of the Little Run, as I call it, will consider putting some of their litter into that bin because it's within eyesight and not a huge distance for them to walk. So that's been done today. You'll notice it as soon as you go and have a look tomorrow.
Council Brooks?
I was a bit shocked by the cost of fitting these benches, knowing that we have fitted benches other places and probably used a councillor in the past as well. So I think we could use our handyman again to put some concrete down. It just seems, because we're asking here now just for the benches to be installed, ten thousand pounds.
Well, eight thousand three hundred and fifty-four.
I think if possible, councillor Brooks, it looks like Ms Palmer over there has some light to share on this potentially.
Thank you. So I did go back and query that price, councillor Brooks. And the reason that the cost is so high is because they went and assessed the area and the actual field, as this gentleman's just explained, it isn't easily accessible for disabled people. And what they wanted to do was if they were going to do that body of work, is to make sure that it was as accessible as possible for anybody to use, particularly anybody in a wheelchair, and that they could turn it, maneuver the chair correctly. But also because of the cost of machinery and everything else, there is no doubt somebody cheaper that can do that. In the time that we had, that is the only quote that we got back. Whether, you know, if you want to give more time to the office for us to go out and try to get more quotes. But the reason that he stated that price was high is because he was not prepared to do a standard job based on where it was and for whom it was to be provided for, and that was the cost for it.
Councillor Brooks, we've got councillor Harris with his hand up.
I haven't finished, but as long as I can come back.
I had three points tonight, because I remember this from my first meeting.
Yes.
Do we know there's a demand for three benches? I don't even know the way the area is, I don't know. Do we know there's going to be twelve or fifteen people wanting to sit on benches if we do that?
It is.
During school time, school term? Yes.
And others as well.
I drove us playing the mustang.
Definitely.
Litter, litter needs to be considered. Either we encourage and perhaps even enforce people to take their litter home. Or, and having run through waste companies, I know that that's difficult, but it can be achieved with education if we have long enough. But if we are going to have bins, it needs to match the household waste streams. So we need to have one for glass and tins, which goes in our grey bins, and one for the residual waste. Otherwise it'll all go to landfill. My third question is, who's going to make the business?
At the moment it's Glendale.
Glendale.
Anything on our, on that area is Glendale, we have a contract.
And do they recycle the waste streams?
We have no recycling bins, I don't think, I'm looking at Sally Anne.
So all the education that goes on in schools about recycling, saving planning, and it just gets wasted because we chuck it all in the back of the skip and it goes this way. That can't be right. All our bins are general bins, aren't they?
Because Corrie wouldn't do it. And they said it wasn't financially viable for them to do it. But I've done some checking, which I think I emailed, and Glendale do offer the service of recycling.
I didn't run Corrie, but if you tried Violia or Biffa, well, I'm using Biffa because they did the household.
Well, they are, they went to Biffa, Corr, what's it, what I said the name? They got took over by Biffa and they wouldn't do a recycling either. But the new, because they say it's too small amount. And also people put dog poo in it. But the thing is, if I can just finish with the bits that I wanted to raise, you've raised the thing of the bins. We sat in our last meeting and we did raise that very issue for the office to look into about, you weren't here, I believe. When it got raised again. And we asked the office to look into getting quotes for bins, but also to contact Glendale about the recycling. So I assume because it's been mentioned about bins that they're probably doing that at the moment. So I think it needs to come to council when it's done. They mentioned moving bins, we've got to be cautious about that because the bins are strategically placed to mark out the boundary of the land that we lease, which includes the row of trees. So if you move the bins.
I think that probably documentation might supersede bin placement.
No, it actually helps the grass cutters and things, that's why they were put there. Because two different people working there.
Councillor Ainsley, yourself councillor, councillor Ainsley.
Yeah, I think we should bring this back to council. I mean, I think that a quote for eight thousand three hundred and fifty-four just for the placement of the three tables and the concrete in, we haven't really bottomed out what we're going to be spending on bins, I love the idea about recycling. And I have to just say this, in my day we used a picnic blanket and took all our litter home with us. So it seems an exceptional amount of money, ten thousand pounds to spend. That's before BBC Two was in there. My conscience is a fire, exactly. But I'm just saying that I think this should, needs to be taken away and brought back to council at the latest date with inclusive quotes of the bins and hopefully more competitive quotes for concrete in. I'd be happy to help with the bins.
Can I make a suggestion? Perhaps, perhaps to look at the, from the user or resident's perspective. Because most of the litter, ninety percent of the litter is from purchasers. Possibly a little, but it's paper, it's paper, it's recyclable. And I think we need, we need to be very clear and one way is to perhaps talk to the disabled home, have a look at what the school are doing and help you make that decision really. And the users, I think they'll use a picnic bench as the seating requirement, not just for, not just for picnicking. So it will serve two purposes.
They use the bench in the playground.
They do use it, yes.
That's often used, particularly in the evening by kids, so.
The great thing, it will replace that, there is a new table, refurbished table and a new seat in the play area, which is used as an eating, eating facility, which is.
To take small children to the play area.
So some clear, some clear input perhaps from the user perspective might just help and clarify the needs. But I would have thought, it sounds a great idea in concept and I think is needed.
I think we're edging ever closer to getting a result on this subject.
Can I just say, just to make clarity, you're right about all of this. One of the things we did investigate also, would you believe, you can get these screw bolts that go into the ground. And they're bolted to the garden. So there are cheaper alternatives rather than concrete pads nowadays, which our handyman could do. Obviously, certainly all powers would put a picnic bench there, a certain person picks them up, wonders why, who am I going to see again?
So that means it's worth noting that that's, that the undertaking to remove the ground for two and a half metres by two and a half metres by a hundred cost is not inconsiderable when you consider the machine hire is so dear three times. And concrete is not the cheapest thing in the world, but I'm sure we can revisit that. So the proposal.
It's to defer.
It's to defer. I think it was made by councillor Ainsley, do we have a second there?
Do we need to come back for the day of November?
Shall we bring back for the next meeting?
Is that possible?
Yeah.
Or do we need more?
Yeah, we should explore the bins now.
So we're coming back in November?
And that's to explore recyclable, recycling compliant bins. The Glendale contract to support that and to look at as a cost effective solution to the picnic benches possible.
Yes, I'll just point out, and I do think personally, I just do not understand how Oakentown has nothing for recycling.
Because what we have, they've already taken one.
We're way off, please.
With our new, with our new industry experts, we can make some inroads into that.
So this man, is your manager?
I'll second that, all those in favour?
Okay, good. Time, 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 time.
Exactly. Okay, item twenty, twenty and twenty, yes. Well, let's see, we'll get there.
Twenty minutes.
Yep, okay, so councillor Ainsley.
I just think this is, are we able to defer this? Because quite simply, we know that we've got a meeting with RCC in a couple of weeks' time to discuss the purpose of the hopper. And whilst I blanch at the additional increase, I do think that we need to make sure we're getting value for money. So if we can, if the bill has been presented, can we defer this item on the grounds that we need to get more bang for our buck from RCC? And we have, we have, we have got a scheduled meeting.
Do you want to defer this to November?
Yes, I do.
So you have to defer this to November as well?
Can we not deal with that payment? Because I'd like to propose that we don't pay that.
I think that would be improved given that we, there's nothing to.
That's the problem, we don't have a contract.
Well, since we've got all that motion, councillor Brooks, that's the thing.
Yeah, can I, can I propose a motion when we get to that? Because that is a separate.
No, this is simply saying that we defer it until after the meeting with RCC.
So you're going to block defer, but I want to have a vote on that payment which was moved to the nine point.
You want nine point six?
Okay, so if there are this paper, we'll come back to that one in a minute.
It's a very quick thing because I'm sure it's going to fall when I.
I mean, do you not want to do that when the whole paper comes back to council?
Because we're not going to pay it.
Because it's a moot point if, if at that point there's nothing to discuss.
If we defer this one, obviously councillor Brooks, the nine point six or whatever it is, we'll defer this to. So in other words, it will need to pass, there will be nil payment over five K.
Okay, as long as we don't pay it.
No, 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 because I'm about to suggest, so that we, I propose therefore that we defer item number twenty, the hopper bus, and item nine point six that came out. Wonderful, thank you councillor. All those in favour of the deferral?
Till November, yes.
Till the next meeting, yes. Thank you, unanimous, far left.
I felt, I basically drafted some additional papers, appendix two and three, which hopefully makes it easier to go through the two stage process where we authorize expenditure, which is what we've been doing tonight, and then we actually, as we do in nine point six, give some examples of how we release funds for significant payments. There's nothing that's in the two appendices that actually are outside the regulations, they are just bringing together. So I'll read what it says here. These additions provide clearer, more structured guidance on the process for authorizing payments or releasing funds, particularly in relation to high value transactions. And I think it's a no brainer that we actually try and make that as simple as possible so that we can comply. And there are examples in the appendices of how it, for various scenarios. That's it.
I think that's. Lovely. I think that promotes financial rigour, so yes, brilliant, councillor Harris.
Appendix three, payments exceeding five thousand pounds. When you're asked for a payment, the work's been done. Now, this is release of funds before we can pay it, so that. Has the work been done? Because it won't actually, because the work's been done if it's, you're asking for approval for work that's already been done. No, we have to, we have to ask for relief, it's one of those, yeah, it's a catch twenty-two, yes, exactly. It just simply says that if it's over five K, we have to get additional authority to release funds. So we've authorized the budget and then we then have to go through a secondary process. I don't. But we're going to say yes because the work's been done. Like I said, no, it'd be an interesting dilemma, wouldn't it? So why do we need that? Because, because unfortunately. It's in the financial regulations, which is.
We're bound by as a non corporate.
Yeah, and it's NALC model financial regulations, so why do we have to have that?
Which is a hurdle to negotiate. Councillor Brooks, you have a comment?
It's for the audit trial.
Yeah.
That's it.
Well, if we said no.
We have said no before now and it's, and it has caused a few issues.
On what?
Because there were genuine reasons for it not to be paid.
Okay.
But we won't go into that. But we, I had one issue which I lost it now on there. Because my understanding is that when we went to Lloyd's, we changed our financial regulations that three members signatories must be considered. And I've read on there somewhere this morning again.
Two.
That it said two.
Correct.
Which should, that clashes with our financial.
Not at all, it's an additional, well, it raises it.
It was a security thing of going with Lloyd's that we had the three councillors. So I don't understand why we're now dropping back to.
No, we haven't dropped anything. This, all this is echoing what has always been in here. The reason for three, I can explain why it was three initially. The reason for staying with three, I'll defer to the board.
Okay, the reason we have cleared the amendment and I'm keen to keep three is because the, obviously the process is initiated, which has nothing to do with me, it's to do with the deputy clerk. I then, I'm the first signatory, then two councillors, independent councillors, and we've got three signatories, I think, within the councils, just in case one of them's ill or on holiday, on honeymoon or something. And they will sign it. So we have two councillors and one office staff who sign the paperwork, no, sign the invoice. And any of the councillors, and either of the councillors will be given a paper copy or a scan, as Chris Clark knows, of the invoices they wish to see, especially obviously with big purchases. So the whole process is, in my opinion, replacing, which is that, oh, there's an invoice, I'll sign it. It's now digital and it's thorough.
But we're still.
And anybody who wants to join that train can join it.
There are a total, three councillors, and there's the town clerk, of course, can actually authorize.
You think, I brought this on and we did the regulations, renewed them. When I read the guidance, it says that the responsible financial officer, who is the clerk, should not be making the payments. He should prepare them, but you just said to me that you are a signatory on it. It is making the payment, you just said to me you would be the first person.
I've just explained in councillor Brooks very quickly because we're all being a bit tired of suspense.
We need to crack on here.
There's an invoice, Cathy just initiates it, so in other words, in Lloyd's, you just initiate it. There's no chance of it going through without initiation. I then sit, see it, get it coscoded with Realta, so assign it to the budget headings that it is and say, right, it's now entered in Realta, it's now this cost code, this budget heading. I'll hand it over to the councillors to look at it and decide whether they want to approve it. And the two councillors then look at it, they can look at the invoice which is scanned to them and they can make the decision to do it.
Okay.
That's as rigorous as you can get, Mark.
No, that's fine, that has been explained to me, I accept that.
Mark, let's, to your proposal councillor Ainsley, if you care, to be honest.
Yes, I'd like to propose, which is written on the papers, one and two.
Seconded by councillor Clark there, all in favour?
Mark, you unanimous? Thank you very much, everybody.
Right, okay, let's, let's keep it, keep it together, twenty-two, filk training, councillor Ainsley again.
Yeah, it's, we're going to have to take money from reserves, the ever famous reserves, often endless reserves.
That would happen one day.
Well, hopefully not because we've got a damn good RFO. But basically, what, what, what this paper proposes is that we finance filk training for members of the finance working group and for office staff. And there'd be another spare seat for anybody else that wants to leave the board, the bandwagon. Filk training, as it says there, split five modules, can take up to a year to complete, hopefully not. And it actually just actually obviously improves the knowledge of the office and this council. We can increase it if you wish, if people want to leave the board, but at the moment it's just working groups plus office staff plus.
So who's in the working group?
Paul Ainsley, Chris Clark, Chris Nix and Anna Dykeley.
What about this Jim, he just put his hand up.
Yes.
And John, sorry, sorry, you just put your hand up.
Okay. Cracking idea, it's only going to speak volumes again about our commitment to better financial governance. And I think that we can all deal with that. Hopefully again, in pursuit of our good and above audit for the next one, fingers crossed, councillor Brooks.
Yes, I support this, but it is training. I'd just like to mention the lack of training as, you know, I had trained as a councillor ten years ago. Could we look at other training?
Yes, bring the paper, bring the paper.
Let's keep it tidy, I'd like to second that as Rick. Would anyone else care to support that, all in favour? You know, well done everyone.
Have you rejected anything to know?
I'd just like to say a quick word, that was a lengthy and relatively chewy one. Well done for keeping our composure going, that was a delightful meeting by comparison to the recent one. The next exciting instalment of Oakentown Council will begin on the twelfth of November at six thirty. Thank you all so much for your participation, that's it.